This energy. Energy.
All right, I need to call the meeting with order. This is the March for meetings. September will call. Let's see all of them. Here, let's see listener.
Yeah.
Let's see Neil Allois.
Yeah.
Let's see Hunter. Here, let's see Ruben. Here, let's see Scott.
Here.
Here. Uh, the next item on the agenda is the minute. The board of trustees, we need a whole minute for February twenty. And the board of trustees, ready to repeat, our February twenty have been circulated into the board. They've got to talk to the online. Unless there are any corrections or questions, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So move.
Second.
Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries minutes for approval. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Uh, this is where we allow members of the public to address the four topics that are within our perpium. That is within our perpium jurisdiction, but is not listed as another item. If you want to speak about a matter that is listed on the agenda, we ask that you wait until that items call and we'll give you an opportunity to speak then. If your parents are on the consent agenda, please let us know if you'd like us to approve parents so that you can speak about it. Anyone who minds speaking should fill out a written form, which is back approved and submitted to village manager. Uh, the client, the public comment is intended as an opportunity for you to make comments to those board. We'll just carry the now saying that this is not ordinarily an occasion for discussion. It is by the authority. It is appropriate to be record village manager or other village staff to respond to that. All speakers will be limited to three events. Speaking here at our meeting with certain forces to be made in rule. Per our established policy, we limit all public comments to total of thirty minutes. Be asked of all speakers to be respectful, civil, and non-competitive. Be asking all members of the audience refrain from applauding or making public comments during or after any speaker. Finally, be, please be sure to speak frankly and politely from. To ensure that all of the period. Are there any public comments? That don't see it. That's what go the next item on the agenda, that is reports committees. Uh, first thing in your reports is committee of the hall, but we did not have that in the whole debate today, so I don't have a report. I would like to announce with respect to the committee of the hall. That in April and May, those meetings. The chair. For our sustainable old gas force. Council for the youth and community preservation commission. Pre-commissioned policy, so they were both all work. It's a good overall word. That reports the finance committee, the ownership group, the chair of that, so I'll ask him to be working.
Thank you. At the March eighteen finance committee meeting, the committee discussed the monthly financial reports for the month. February, uh, general fund revenue performance was, uh, up in a number of sources ahead of our monthly bunching targets prior to the seats. Including property and place, uh, property taxes and places period cap. The water fund also had a strong. We discussed the sales taxes increased for the second month in a row. Uh, that holds getting our hopes up and this is going to show a permanent trend. Uh, expenditures in all of our funds are pretty much on track for this time of year. We discussed the number of changes to our capital projects scheduled for twenty twenty five. As well as a few logistical challenges that have impacted the timeline of delivery for two vehicles here. Part of our C I P. The committee also discussed the twelve million dollar bond sale in Washington, uh, some committee meetings Tuesday night. Said heard earlier this morning. Uh, and that will be discussed in more detail later this meeting. Those bonds, of course, continue as like default bonds. Uh, lastly, the committee discussed strategies and potential policy changes. That may be considered future in response to a number of legislative changes that have even been made and being discussed. And of federal and state laws that could impact us. The village, uh, will be modifying its budget schedule this year, pushing things forward earlier. To accommodate a different conversation on our financial policies and to ensure that we're able to respond appropriately to any changes that come up.
Thanks for that report. The next report is Ann Junior. And trust me, this is our representative on that.
This is my very short report. We did not meet this month. We already meeting on Wednesday, April twenty third at seven P M.
Thank you. Revenue is sourced from all. Uh, next report is called advisor committee and our representative on that is Dr. Baldwin.
Golf advisor committee met on Monday, September eighteen. Staff have given the bid, the bid process for the clubhouse project and informed the committee that the bids have been slightly under budget. The temporary solution for food and beverage service during construction was discussed. A fully equipped food trailer will be purchased after tonight's board approval. That will allow the continued full service operations during construction, which will also have improved customer satisfaction. And after the clubhouse is open, we have the potential for future use of the trailer for reset. And the work to install temporary electric service began this week as, as well as the strategic, strategic pre-removals. And the next thought about before meeting will be Monday, your votes would be first.
Thanks for that report. The next report is sustainable task force. And trust me, people out there is a good work.
Thank you. We had, we had actually two meetings until next board meeting. Um, at the February twenty fifth meeting, we finalized our postcard messages for twenty twenty five. We also discussed updating our website and we received more information about the recycle coach app. Which helps people dispose of their recycle waste property. We also had a meeting on March eighteen. Uh, at this meeting, we planned a collection and analysis of data on single-use plastic bags. Usage in the village. There was also discussion around planning social media campaigns for April. Which will involve a series of video reports discussing different aspects of sustainability. Our next meeting will be on April twenty two. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Uh, next report is council for inclusion community and our representative on that.
Thank you. Uh, the Glaco Council for inclusion and community met on March third. And we can continue discussions of the, um, of what was the family belonging event at Central School on March eleventh. Uh, where the council members hosted a booth, uh, and a sensory room. The council also discussed the need for youth representation in local government and the importance of civic engagement. As such, council members discussed the intention for involving high school students in G C I C meetings or during activities as student liaisons. The next circularly special meeting of the G C I C is Monday, April seventh.
Thanks for that report. The next report is the preservation commission. And trust me, our representative on that.
Okay, thank you. The preservation commission met on March eleventh. They reviewed the demolition permit for a nineteen, nineteen forty eight mid-century modern home located at five eighty nine Greenwood. This multi-million dollar property is listed as significant in the list and cities villages list of historic properties. But it is not a landmark building. The commission determined after considerable discussion. And not to take any further action on this property. The commission also reviewed plans for public outreach for preservation month, which is in May. And is working out with staff on something called what and where is this quizzes, um, for a future village application. Commission also discussed upstating, updating the online story map, which is available through the internet. And the village has been demolished and rebuilt since nineteen ninety. Uh, the commission continued to discuss ways to encourage preservation, discourage demolition. And, uh, consider incentives, um, for historic preservation. Let's see. Oh, then we'll also be, uh, doing a presentation at the upcoming, um, event with the village board. Uh, describing progress of last year's. And the next, uh, meeting, I think for that group. Will be the first of April.
Election day.
Okay.
February.
Election.
Thanks for that report. The next report is tree commission.
The tree commission did not meet, um, in the past month, but we did do a sort of field trip for, um, a village staff, some members. Uh, and we're fortunate to have the opportunity to attend a special tree preservation seminar. Sponsored, uh, by, uh, the Morton Arboretum. Uh, there were two staff people in attendance. Two members of the tree commission and one member of the preservation commission who attended. So that, uh, that is, oh, let's see, I think their next meeting is the eleventh of April. I think that's it. Thank you.
That concludes the reports of our committees and commissions. The next item on the agenda is reports of officers and first of that is the new champion reports all turned over to our village manager, Phil Rowland.
Thank you, President Brown. Good evening, everybody. So a few, uh, quick items to my, uh, my report this evening. Uh, first is, uh, in relation to our vehicle pet license renewal process. Uh, the annual license renewal materials for both vehicles and pets were mailed to all of our households this month. And the little process is underway. As staff has shared in past weeks, uh, with the board and the community. We have transitioned this year to a fully virtual, uh, program for vehicle licenses. Uh, residents are encouraged to update all their information, uh, and purchase those licenses online. If you're able to, uh, you can also mail them back here. We have people coming into, uh, village hall this week, uh, to purchase those, um. Uh, license manuals. A lot of positive comments so far on the transition to a virtual sticker program. Um, just so everyone knows, we do still have permanent stickers that are available. Those, um, can be requested if, if an individual would like one. Uh, stickers are no longer required to be displayed, uh, on a vehicle. Uh, renewals are due by May first and, um, any that we receive after that day do incur sixty dollar late fees. So we encourage everybody to act quickly, uh, and then get that process done.
Um, before you, before you go on, there is a reason. There's some rest that's made by a sticker, you know, permanent sticker. Uh, I don't know if it's still true, but it used to mean that if you wanted to say Chicago. You didn't have any kind of vehicle sticker. You might run into trouble if they assume you're a Chicago person that didn't have their sticker. So even though we had a virtual sticker, maybe our residents are interested. Yet if you go into a permanent sticker to warm it up, other municipalities, they hear stop.
So, um, those, those are, as I said. You do have to come in and those all get down the arts. Process on a month. That's a good point. We will underscore in all of our materials that are mine house. Uh, it is spring, so they tell us. Uh, even though it's snow overnight, it's the first day of spring today. Uh, and mid-spring comes construction season, uh, as everyone is well aware, village has a. Year of capital projects, uh, ready to go. And just this week, uh, we started one of our largest of the year, which is the replacement of the water van on Dundee Road. Uh, this was described in detail last month by homework strategy money startup. Uh, I won't repeat it, but there's a lot of information as it relates to how traffic is moving, uh, and will be moving through this project duration on village's website. Uh, I would just remind everyone that for this and all projects that we will have on our way this year. We, uh, share on a weekly basis in our email, e-news blast that comes out on the Friday afternoon. Uh, as well as on the social, on village's social media and website. Lots of project updates, lots of information. We work hard to make sure that that information is updated and available to the community, uh, to help answer questions. Uh, give insights, uh, what is coming up in your neighborhood. Um, you'll see, we'll be talking later this evening about a number of projects, uh, that are being requested the board consideration tonight. Not the least of which is our clubhouse project. Um, so we're, we've done a lot happening here in Glaco in twenty twenty five, and I encourage everyone. Uh, to take a glance, um, at village's website where we outline in detail all of these projects. Uh, something called our C I P story map. Um, it is, uh, a G I S map that showcases each of the projects that we're working on. Uh, provides some important information about those projects. That is available on village's website at villageofglaco dot org backslash C I P. Uh, as always, if there are issues or concerns about any of the projects we have going on. Ask everyone to reach out to the public works department. Uh, we have project managers who are responsible for individual projects and they can help, uh, resolve any issues that they have. So it is, uh, gonna be a busy year, but a good month. And the last, I just wanted to share, uh, some dates that are coming up because as again, this spring. Uh, we often get a lot of questions about some important, uh, spring cleaning, uh, related dates. Um, so the first is Lashore Recycling Systems curbside, curbside yard waste and food scrap collection program. Begins April second, so, uh, just a couple of weeks. And that will continue every Wednesday through mid-December. That's both for subscribers and those who purchase, uh. Uh, stickers, those are available here, or those are available at village hall. Uh, but as I said, that program begins April second. Um, your village's restrictions on the use of gasoline-powered leaf blowers, uh, are in effect. Um, gas blowers can only be used between April first and thirtieth for spring cleanup. And then again, October first through November thirtieth. All other times we are, we require battery operated or electric or, uh, as I like to have my nine-year-old to, uh, use a broom. Um, those are all acceptable in all of those other times of the year. Uh, and public safety is enforcing that. We have, uh, we do issue citations particularly to land state contractors. And frankly, we've had pretty good success, uh, with compliance. Last year was the first year of those big renovations. Uh, the sixth annual donation recycle drop-off event, uh, which is host of that sustainability task force is coming on Saturday. May thirty first. Uh, we've been publicizing that date in e-news for the last few weeks. Uh, it is always, uh, really good opportunity to donate and grab a lot of. Things that may still have some life left to them or can be easily recycled. We have a list of what will be available on the village's website, um, and that takes place in the southeast area parking lot. Uh, from ten A M. to one P M. On again, Saturday, May thirty first. And then for all those items that you can't donate or recycle, L R S does conduct. Our annual cleanup day, um, or spring cleanup day, which will take place on Saturday, June seventh. That is one week after donating recycle day. Um, and they will collect everything that is placed out of her. We will put information in e-news. And I'm going to cite, uh, acceptable materials that can be put out. Always a reminder. Cannot put out hazardous materials. Uh, if you have excess, uh. Stain or paint, uh, usually oil-based, things like that, they cannot be collected. Electronics cannot be collected at curb. We have programs available to recycle or to provide resources, uh, where you can drop those items off. But they can't be picked up at curb. Uh, and with that, that is the extent of my report this evening.
Uh, thank you for that. The next item on the agenda is the village president's report, that's B. Um, and there are three proclamations on this report. The first is consideration proclamation declaring April twenty five. Yes, office, office, compared to acceptance month in Glento. Proclamation is going to be published, uh, online and circulated to board members. Unless there's a discussion, is there a motion to issue the proclamation?
Excellent. Second.
It's been moved to second at all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Motion carries, uh, April twenty twenty five, we just passed it where it's accepted this month in Glento. Next item is consideration of proclamation declaring April twenty second, twenty twenty five, it's birthday in Glento. Yeah, that was published online, circulated forward unless there are any discussions, uh, required. Is there a motion to issue this proclamation?
So. Second.
It's been moved to secondly, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? There are none. The motion, uh, is carried. Next item is consideration of proclamation declaring April twenty fifth, twenty twenty five, yes, Arbor Day in Glento. That motion, the proclamation has been called out by considering the work. Is there a motion to issue the proclamation?
So move. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Motion carries, uh, so we approve and we'll issue all three proclamations. The next item on the agenda is consent agenda. Consent agenda, our items are published online for everyone in the community. And reviewed by the board members either individually or if a, if a whole, uh, meeting we've already had. We don't think they warrant any further public discussion. List is what they are. Uh, unless there are any questions or discussion, is there a motion to approve and consent agenda?
So move.
Second.
It's, uh, move. And secondly, for this, you need a roll call. So let's have that.
Let's see all of them.
Yes.
Let's see listener.
Yeah.
Neil Allois.
Yes.
Let's see.
Consent agenda is approved. Thanks, everybody. The next item on the agenda is right here, first item, way to business. Is consideration of ordinance providing for the issuance of approximately twelve million twenty-five thousand dollars of general occupation bonds. Series twenty twenty five. Of the village with the purpose of improving the village golf commerce. Providing to the Dundee and collection of direct accounting tax efficient repayment. But principal interest on the bonds and authorized sale of bonds to the purchase.
Could be.
Um, now I'll ask our designated village manager, CFO, Mandy Lard, to put that in the panel.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Uh, so earlier this morning, uh, village held a competitive bond sale together to catch the moment. Uh, just providing a little bit of background of how we got here today. Uh, this twelve million dollar sale is the second installment related to the village's successful bond, that was done in April twenty twenty four. Which offers fifteen million dollars in general occupation bonds for the Glaco Golf Club's project. Uh, in June of twenty four, we issued the first installment of those bonds of fifteen million dollars. Um, and then obviously this month. And for each of the due is consideration of onshorements for the sale of the remaining twelve. Um, the closing of the bonds, if this is approved by the board tonight, will happen on April third, which will be remaining, uh, posted on the bond sheet. Uh, the scope of work and budget costs that are covered by this fifteen million will include the entire Glaco Golf Club house project. Uh, any remaining related buildings and additional amenities that have been included in that project. Um, the tentative groundbreaking is scheduled for May. Uh, so we can get the bond, those given funding to help fund, establish costs. We do still have, uh, a small amount remaining in three million dollars, but it's issued, you know, will be drawn back first. Uh, and then the twelve million dollars will be used to buy the destruction. Uh, and just to note, uh, as we get later into the meeting, we'll be talking about where that's coming, uh, for this project. These bond postings will be supplemented by fundraising from the friends who work the lot of. Um, and may also be supplemented by grants where we are eligible and able to get a bunch. So this is the, the village's first bond issue as a whole unit. Um, we were able to issue bonds at a twenty-five year term group. Um, with an average annual payment of eight hundred twenty-eight thousand dollars. Um, as I mentioned, the live auction was, uh, conducted earlier today at ten P M. Uh, and there's a couple notes that I'd like to, um, know before I turn it over to the committee from Spirit and Angel. Uh, by issuing at twenty-five years or twenty years, the village has the ability to save taxpayers about sixty thousand dollars a year. Uh, as opposed to issuing at a short rate. So that things will be generally for directly cast onto our taxpayers. Which company wouldn't know that opportunity can do with that. That is a good story. Um, I have to turn it over to the committee shortly.
Sure. We're showing. If you're responsible. So us. We were financial, uh, municipal advisor to the village. Uh, good evening, everybody. Uh, so this morning, as Nikki had mentioned, we took bids through competitive open auction on the village's general obligation bond, series one twenty five. And not a twelve million twenty-five thousand dollars. Through the open auction process, uh, this morning, we received, uh, a total of forty-two bids from seven bidders. The best bid coming from the Baker group, uh, at a original rate of four point one eight three zero percent. So after we received the final bid, we then, uh. So, but, but just raise, resize issue. We didn't change the. Part of our, our, uh, twelve million twenty-five thousand, the maturities were within the maturity structure. Uh, that caused the final interest rate to come in at a four point one seven one five percent. I will just mention that it's great. From that, that low bid of four point one eight three zero to a high bid of four point three zero three two percent. Uh, so a, as far as this issuing process, the village has been through before most recently, uh, just been, you know, this year ago, two years ago. You're, thank you, thank you. Uh, there are several steps, including going to standard course, uh, to update the village's rating and also apply a rating on the new bonds. And, and part of the packet you'll have, uh, in front of you, not a little bit of results, but the rating report from standard. Or, or, uh, please present that the village's rating is affirmed at triple A, highest possible down rating, uh, with the state law. Um, if you look through the report, uh, they talk about some credit characteristics of the village, including the stable and strong local economy. Long history of deposit and financial operations. Extremely strong reserve levels and proactive management team with, uh, an active board participation. It's these, uh, this rating and these credit characteristics that left the demand of itself today, uh, with seven bidders, uh, in the amount of bids. That each present or each put forward to try to win the village's bond issue. Uh, and again, as Nikki mentioned, we'll close on April third, uh, the village, uh, at that point, we'll see project proceeds. And I'm happy to answer any questions regarding my content. So, uh, I understand there was a. Absolutely. Uh, so, uh, bond or purchase. Part of twelve million twenty-five thousand, uh, eighty-five thousand four hundred forty-nine dollars. So total production of, uh, twelve point two bid.
A couple of other things I'd like to know, um, in, included in the packet in front of me are the poll button results. And you can see in the far right column, uh, by doing an open auction, um, such as this, we were able to save about ninety-four thousand from. The original bid that was received from the final bid that was the mini bid. Uh, so if you think that this is a very productive, um, way of selling bonds and it is most beneficial to the residents, it saves them the most money. Uh, the other I know that I didn't want to call out is that the way that the bond is structured, they are callable, um, within the first, the after ten years. Like nine or ten years. So if interest rates start to fall and we find ourselves in a more favorable environment after that tenure, it allows us, the village can also refinance some bonds as savings in the future. So that is an option.
What, what would the difference be if we'd done non-callable bonds? What, what would the difference be if we'd done non callable bonds? Yes. It's not typical, I'll put it that way, to not have, not to have non callable bonds beyond ten years. Um.
That might answer the question.
So, I, I couldn't tell you if there'd be an interest rate penalty or benefit, um, but ultimately.
Nobody's gonna think that kind of.
We lose our, you lose your call option and the ability to lower your debt service in the future, but a ten year call option, we, we won't until twenty thirty four, call options will reach over ten years. Uh, it's typically the market, so you don't gain anything but not doing that, I would say.
Thanks.
Forty second places, updated bond warrants, there was a draft warrant, including in the packet. Um, and the final numbers that were incorporated into the client bond warrants of the sugar races, um, and. For village war preparation of those warrants, unless there are any objections.
So, the ordinance was submitted to us earlier with blanks. Blanks got filled in, this result of the auction this morning. Uh, so that's the story, uh. Uh, we did well, we do, uh, as our. Chief of Staff, well, wait. Bonds. The bonds are, are for twenty five years, which is what we think of. Let the length of the building, uh, as opposed to twenty years. The village will be paying more interest, but residents every year will be paying a much less. And that was one of the areas, but we can, we can have bond. Mash with the gas and the truck. Fire will be only twenty years or less, which means the current residents pay more than residents pay back in twenty years, that will be right. Since before we begin out, but it'll be thinking. With that, um, unless there are any further questions or comments, is there a motion to approve? The ordinance provided for issuance of bonds?
Second.
Second.
So who can secondly, we have a roll call.
Rusty Hall.
Yes.
Rusty listener.
Yes.
Rusty Hall.
Yes.
Rusty Hunter.
Yes.
Rusty Rubin.
Yeah.
Rusty Scott.
Yes.
Well, the carries, so when she, our, um. These are all. You find underway. Alright. That's by. In connection with that project. This is consideration of resolution, approving and carrying vice minister, two, these kinds of problems, but there are urgent government goals. For construction management service, our public works right upon the start of for that complicated way.
Thank you, President Rowan and, uh, village trustees. So this is the, uh, second spending authority. Remember, I was here in January talking about the first spending authority, um, for our demolition and general, uh, job site departments. So since then, we've, uh, gone ahead and posted the all trades bid, and those bids were received February twenty six. Um, as you've heard about numerous updates, uh, those good results were very favorable. So they came in below our estimates, um, which was very exciting and great timing with, um, going out with Nikki's presentation as well. Um, the bid payment price. I did want to note though, however, um, there are additional costs for this project that are not included in tonight's spending authority. So those are what we're calling owner costs. Um, and as you can see, I've been listed here some examples of our architectural and engineering fees. Um, permit fees, the golf simulators are being purchased outside of this spending authority. Uh, our paymentation payment, furniture, IT equipment, and any of the temporary facilities. Um, so while what we're approving tonight, um, covers a considerable amount of the clubhouse construction, there are certain items that are still outside of this budget, I wanted to make that clear. Um, but then we talked about, um, what we're doing to move forward with the clubhouse construction. So right now, we're undergoing, um, some site preparation, which includes some strategic tree removal. Um, we're taking out construction fencing already, um, preparing for some of our temporary facilities and, um, even, um, putting in temporary electric. This is all to prepare for the demolition, um, which we have received our permit for, um, but we're just waiting on the timing for that pending, um, other permits that need to come in for the clubhouse. Um, so we have started with some public outreach, it's mostly planning preparation right now, some of the immediate waivers have been notified and some work is going on. Um, but we're working together with communication managers and council, um, to talk through and plan out, um, all, all the public outreach and sure clubhouse. Um, part of that is tentative plans for the groundbreaking ceremony, um, which is the worst. Um, and then lastly, as I've kind of already noted, um, the penny permits are a big driver of how this project will move forward. So the, the clubhouse has been submitted to Cook County Building and Zoning for review. Um, we've received quite a few comments, but overall that, the, um, process is still pending. And then similarly, we've, um, submitted this project to MWRD for review and have not received any comments as of yet, we're expecting those many people. So once those comments keep coming back, we'll get a better feeling of how we're going to progress through the permitting phase and how long that will take. So I wanted to. Put for you, okay, this is the timeline we talked about last time, so as you can see, we've moved down into the second phase of spending authority. Um, some dates that I've shifted, um, so we're expecting demolition to begin at this point. April, May, think by that time, I think that's March, April, and then also, um, the beginning of, um, construction for the clubhouse is also applied by shifted, May, June, and that's just based on. Waiting for these permits to come with the clubhouse. Are there any questions?
Is there any reason to think that? I want to hazard a guess about what Cook County does or doesn't do, but I'm assuming from this that the typical permitting process, like this estimate based on what would be normal. Is there any reason to believe that it would go outside of that?
At this time, we don't know, so that's why I think mid-April we'll get our first round of comments back and really understand if there's anything substantial or if it's just small items that we need to clean up and resumet. So, um, at this, at this time, right, this is our standard permitting timeline for us, we need this one.
Any other questions for our public works director? If not. Is there a motion, resolution, certain of here, here to advise for our general.
So move. Second.
We will allow that.
Rusty Hall. Yes, Rusty listener.
Yes.
Rusty Hall.
Yeah.
Rusty Hunter.
Yes.
Rusty Rubin.
Yes.
Rusty Scott.
Yes.
Motion carries, so we approve our deal of deals. Next item on the agenda, also, there's a, there's a consideration of resolution. Also, it's a head and engineering services agreement with Baxter and Woodman, he from Chicago. For year one of the stormwater master planning in a mountain, actually, two hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Thank you. So I wanted to start tonight by talking about, um, why and how we chose that upswing unit for this project. So we started with a RFQ, request for qualifications. And we did that intentionally, uh, what we wanted to know is what firms in the area are qualified to do this work? But we didn't want to prescribe exactly what we wanted out of a stormwater master plan. We incorporated in the RFQ process an interview, um, so we received eleven responses to the RFQ, eleven companies responded. And of those, we interviewed six of them. During the interview process, we were able to get a much better understanding from those consultants on the approach that they would take for the stormwater master plan. It's a very common, um. I guess, plan or mechanism that municipalities use to assess their stormwater. Uh, but we wanted to make sure that we were approaching it in a unique way for the village of Glanco. Um, and so with that, we heard a lot of really great things, uh, from Baxter and Woodman that made us feel like this was the right plan for Glanco. The first was a partnership with Hame Associates. Um, Hame Associates has great expertise, uh, in stormwater as well as Baxter and Woodman. So we had two great firms coming together to work together on our stormwater master plan. Um, they also had great modeling experience and they, um, explained to us the benefits of using an ICM modeling for a stormwater. We also know that Baxter and Woodman has great experience on taking projects from a concept level all the way through to construction, which is important as we partner with them. On this two-year project and move through important stormwater projects into our future. Uh, we also know that they've done work under B management, which is a very unique aspect for Glanco. So we know that they have the expertise that will help guide us, um, to manage our revenues. They also have great expertise with obtaining grant funding, I think we all know that these stormwater projects can be quite expensive. Uh, so be able to execute on that grant funding is going to be an important aspect. And lastly, um, their approach on data management, we felt like really aligned with our, um, future goals for CIP multi-disiplinary projects. So we felt like the way that they approached their data, um, and how they were going to work with it, um, is going to help us into the future. So what we're going to be doing in the stormwater master plan, as you can see, we've broken it into three parts. Um, first is we're going to be investing in our GIS mapping. Uh, so as you know, we have a lot of our data, um, all of our utilities, roadways in our GIS mapping system. And I would say that our level of confidence in our water and our sanitary information is very high, very reliable. Um, unfortunately, it's not the case for our stormwater data, so through this plan, we're hoping to increase that confidence level. Um, we'll be doing some field data collection to correcting things, um, updating on, making sure that as we move forward, we have confidence in our GIS data. The next will be performing the hydraulic modeling, um, to provide service level maps, um, which will help us outline the proposed projects into the future. And with those, uh, outline anticipated costs, help us with our ten years CIP plan. And then lastly, uh, what we want to do is we want to make sure that the stormwater plan not only aligns projects, but helps us explore policy changes, um, that make Glanco. And our stormwater system more resilient in the future with climate change. So we're looking at ordinance changes, the way we operate, um, you know, our operations leaders, uh, within our sewer division, uh, to make sure that our storm system is resilient. Any questions?
Here, but for both. Let's, let our act run.
I didn't know, I was coming up, so I have a quick question, um. For a couple. Um, what type of funding opportunities do we, would, are typically available for this type of work? Are we talking just like the gray infrastructure, green infrastructure? What's, what, what is out there, what have other municipalities received and how beautiful?
I mean, I, I can answer, but I will still go ahead, our, our expert, so, um, I'll introduce, this is Matt Moffett, um, he is with Baxter and Woodman, uh, so the, leading the stormwater master plan, so.
Hi, thank you, uh, yes, Matt Moffett, Baxter and Woodman, the project manager for this project. Uh, so to answer your question, uh, that is one of our global's, so what our master plan would be a whole section on available funding mechanisms, uh, for. CIP projects, uh, including grid structure, things like that, uh, both A and us have a significant amount of experience working with. Uh, local county, state, federal, uh, funding programs on some of our master planning side itself, there's not a lot of funding opportunities available for that. MWRD does have a much more, to more recommendation, very Chicago, just very Chicago. Uh, does have a funding mechanism to help with studies, but that. Those funds are pretty well geared towards, um, community, low income communities about the.
Community like ours would be eligible for any type of actual, like, construction-related stormwater, uh, funding.
I think there's certainly opportunities, there, uh, a lot of them are in question right now with, uh, a lot of the federal funding issues going on right now. Um, I mean, Baxter would help the village in twenty seventeen, get funding for a reseptulation project by Aspen Lane, uh, that was through, uh. Seven pollution reduction through Great Lakes, um, program, we have fifty thousand dollars towards that construction project back to twenty seventeen, so there are opportunities for community like that to. Get funding, uh, of course, your status does, you know, uh, uh, medium income does make it a little bit difficult, but, um. The level of flooding experience and stuff, there's a lot of factors that play into that.
Have a couple more. Um. I noticed there's quite a couple of public engagement components, both in phase one and phase two. Um, what type of data, oh, what are you looking to collect at those public engagement? Um, yeah, in the future, and what have we already received from the public in terms of flooding reports or things like, there's two bullet, would we have, do we have data? From reports, and then what have we spent yet?
So we do have data, and I mean, the data we have is, is emails, phone calls, it's, it's not necessarily an centralized location. And so I think, uh, what we're hoping to do, one of the first things we're looking to do in the stormwater master plan is to engage with the public. Um, understand what they're experiencing, um, and then the key component to that is matching it up with the modeling to verify does that look accurate. Um, are, you know, are what people are saying makes sense and does it show and reflect in our system? Um, so we're hoping that we, you know, there's variety ways that we'll engage with the public, um, but we'll be wanting them to reach out to us. And then we'll take some of our historical data as well, put it in, um, a centralized area to incorporate it into the overall database. So, one and then.
Sure, just a little more detail, uh, um, in addition to the information staff currently has, we're going to point that into GIS. Uh, we've got a process that we use in these master planning, uh, processes that we call our stormwater exit management system, basically pulling everything stormwater related. Uh, from previous studies to your existing infrastructure complaints, reports of flooding, I think that into GIS, so. See and view it all together in a spatial, uh, atmosphere. And then, uh, we'll use that data to create exhibits for a public meeting that we'd like to have, and this is more early on process before we really even get too far into building a model that's a little bit listening. Uh, process where people can comment and explain their experiences to us, there are ones out there living, you know, living with it daily and anticipating the next rainstorm and whatnot. Uh, and then we also will put together a, uh, resident survey that'll be online. Um, because usually we have worked out the details, but, uh, usually I'll link your water belt, also, we can use that are on the website where people can. Report their experiences, that all comes into our database, and then as we're building the model, we use those reported, that reported flooding information to kind of cross check, uh, what the model's saying is happening, and this is what people are saying.
Right, a couple more. Um. Any one, then maybe another. I don't know how to answer the not so easy one. So for green infrastructure types, what, what type of solution do you think municipalities could implement on the public property?
Uh, certainly, so, uh, a common one is, uh, there's permanent pavement, um, in streets, so we did a big project next door, two, two towns over, Calworth, and then their twenty twenty three. Programs, it's actually a project back in, like thirteen is what it's done, it's a ten-year program. Uh, we've also done, uh, recently papers that goes in floss more. So the asphalt was, uh, a different design, we, we designed papers for them, and there's, it got political, they switched asphalt at the end.
Okay.
But, uh, they, their second phase project was constructed like two years ago, and that was with papers and, and we're, uh, we've done those also in. What? Papers on the.
On the ways and maybe sidewalks as well, or?
Yeah, and then we've done, uh, there's tree boxes that you can do, they're not really cost effective, really be the most thing for your buck when you're tearing the street already anyway. And you can replace it, uh, with, so the papers, while water can get through, they have cracks between the bricks and while water permeates between the bricks. And then we, uh, over excavate under the road with an aggregate base, so the water can store in the base and percolate down into the ground and not all just get washed straight, uh, off into our, um, river and.
Thank you, that's more informative to spread. Okay, uh, my last question, so we have the plan, we have two stages of this plan, one and two, you're one and you're two. Um. The data we've collected and we're going to collect, so at the end of this, this question for Monica, so I think we'll, we'll be left with a product, right? Uh, we have a model, uh, you know, existing and proposed, we can add some plans of projects we want to, uh, build. Um, you know, with just forever changing, um. Against definitions of what these storms look like. The two-year and the four-year, we have definitions today of what they are, how many inches. And those keep. Likely to change again, and, you know, to update it on what a hundred-year storms and how frequent. Take this project and actually be able to use it going forward and plug in new information and be able to, um, use it in depth. and plug in new information and be able to use it in a dynamic way. You mentioned stormwater asset management. So how do we intend to have like this data to be able to plug it versus just have it be the plan from twenty twenty-four and twenty-five? And then we're like, all right, there we are, twenty thirty, things are different now. What you, how are we thinking of approaching that? That's a question often needs to, are we?
Yeah, well, I, I think there's, there's two components to I think what you're asking. The first one comes to how do we keep up with climate change? I think it's important. So the rainfall data recently changed in okay, twenty nineteen, Illinois adopted the rainfall data, which changes how we calculate the stormfall. And I will say, right now, through this stormwater master plan, we are trying to achieve a hundred-year level storm event, not level surface. It's not cost effective potentially to do it everywhere, but that's our goal. So that's a fairly defined standards. So I, I think where we are setting ourselves up well in the future by just setting our standards so high. I think the second part to your question is, is creating a plan and then needs change. And we don't want to be stuck with the current plan that we created in twenty twenty-six. And things are much different in twenty thirty. And so I hear that. And I think a large part of how we want to craft this plan is really in this third goal. It's exploring policy changes and recommendations for operations and maintenance. Just to make sure that we are being proactive and we're staying ahead of what we need to do to maintain our stormwater system. I think while I identify projects, I think what I want this to be more of is a tool to help us identify how we need to be continuously scoping projects into our future. So we'll have both, but I think focusing more on this third goal point of looking at awareness, making changes. So that's looking at, you know, new development and it's looking at our operations, you know, when we have a break in the main, how are we best addressing this? So.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Two quick questions. How does this relate to the Lake County Stormwater Management Program, especially as it relates to water quality?
I feel like I missed that question. We're actually doing the Lake County Stormwater Management Plan update currently. I should, my team is.
You're actually working with the county now on that?
Yes, yeah, we were, we were selected last summer to, as the consultant to update their, the Lake County Stormwater Management Plan. So.
Well, that's a good, that's a good thing.
Yeah, so a- as far as water quality, that's something we're still looking into on how much they're going to far down that path they're going to go. There's historically been a lot of resistance in our state to really define quantitative metrics to water quality. You know, it is happening elsewhere in the country, more on the coasts, Wisconsin is a little bit. So it, it's something that with this plan update, they're exploring the idea of do they recommend doing something in the future? And if it goes that far, the farthest that the plan update will go is a recommendation to consider it. It won't be installing any metrics.
Thank you. And one more.
I was just going to add that water quality is something we'll be looking at. And to Matt's point, there aren't a lot of regulations that apply to us right now in our water quality. But it's, we're not ignoring that fact and it's like.
The second question, we have a lot of the bees over in the eastern part of town. Will you be taking a special look at those areas? And I know it's a very complex legal issue as well. And you know, the kinds of easements we have, or if we have any easements, we'll be taking a look at this one to make sure we took a look at that. We've tried some cooperative programs with neighbors in the past and, shall we say, we had bad mixed success.
B management was a topic we've explored in great detail with Baxter Women in the interview process. And it's one of the reasons why we're choosing to go with them. But I think looking forward, what we're hoping is a strategic approach to the ravines. They're neat, they are complicated as you're moving because of their ownership. And so we are going to be exploring through the stormwater master plan, you know, where is the village's responsibility in providing control for those ravines, the road, the toll, and how we address it systematically. I think we want to make sure we're seeing each other being somewhat the same and then someone unique to.
Yeah, I just want to make a statement from, you know, my work with Park District and the number of times we've had to close the beaches due to water quality issues and like issued as many, it's, I don't know, eight or twelve times a year. That's why I'm especially interested in the bees that are going into the lake. So, thank you.
Anybody else? Let me say a few things. One, you know, I lived in this there for a long, long time. And there was a time that there were many areas that were where the stormwater situation was poor. And I am grateful that before we start this project, it's way better than Houston. So that's good. But the second thing I want to mention is right now, I'm sure there are lawyers, we're about to get a third one. I just want to say I am grateful that we not just have lawyers, you just heard a lot of issues both to have an engineer, a planner, and a board who can be that expert. I'm sad we're hiring experts. We are grateful for both of those, I think it's useful to have people with other experience who just saw that. Third thing I want to say is how impressed I was with the written and the oral presentation that came from five in the public works department. It shows how this, we're not thinking fly or pure. We're thinking hard about how to do what's right for the village. We're trying to spark efficiency. You know, I guess you'd expect that, but it's exhilarating to see it. So thank you, Mark, to your team. And Mark, we're paying you much, I'm buying to expect that. With that, unless there are any deeper questions or comments, is there a motion to approve the resolution offering engineering services for Baxter Women? Okay, that can see. The motion?
Second.
Let's have a roll call.
Trusty Hall, yes, trusty listener.
Yes.
Trusty meal. Trusty, yes, trusty Ruben, yes, trusty Scott.
Yes.
Motion carries and the category. Next item on the agenda, there's a consideration of a resolution referring to publicly zoning code amendment regarding the authority to non-inform structures, the zoning commission for public hearing certification. I'll ask for help, service manager, favor back here.
President Roland, Minister of War. This is step one in a reset process to Minnesota code. This is really a clarification of existing interpretation about the authority to continue non-inform instructions. This is probably more commonly referred to as grandfathering, ability to keep non-informing aspects in the structure. Particularly when that structure is torn down. Currently, the code allows replacement up to one year after the demolition of the structure, regardless of non-informity. If existing informies are not. So for example, if you have a house that exceeds the allowed floor area, setbacks, you can tear down that house. You can rebuild it with a new house in one year and maintain those existing. And that's typically how the code treats tear down and specifically of houses. You do that, you can't make any of these. So if you have, for example, your house exceeds the allowed floor area by a hundred square feet, new house can exceed the allowed floor area by a hundred square feet, not a hundred. The code is very clear. This does not apply to accessory structures, for example, attached garage. You tear down a non-conforming attached garage, you have to replace it with a conforming attached garage. Or structures that are devoted to non-conforming uses unless a variation is granted by the Z E A. So if you have an attached garage that's within a required setback, you can't tear that garage down and replace it in the required setback unless you go to the Z E A and get a variation. But it treats it a little bit differently whether it's principal structure of the house or whether it's a attached structure. The proposed amendment would clarify and confirm the previous determination, interpretation of the code that this also does not apply to a non-residential structure is replaced with a residence. So for example, churches and schools or vulnerable buildings are allowed in our single family residential zones by rank. So these can be significantly larger than a typical house. This code amendment would clarify that you cannot tear down, for example, a twenty thousand square foot church building and replace it with a twenty thousand square foot house on a lot that may allow, for example, five thousand square foot house. This is a code interpretation which we found files, property files for other, for previous examples where a church was torn down, replaced with a house, both informing uses. That house was required to meet current zoning requirements because that used change. Some additional considerations as we go through this process. Should this authority continue to continue these non-informations? Apply when a non-residential structure is replaced by a new structure. With a different forming school building, could you replace with a non-informing church building? Or would you have to bring it into the plan with that one? And then also should the zoning board have the ability to grant variations to allow new structures with new uses to continue to be known. Currently, like, like I mentioned earlier, the Z E A can allow the replacement of accessory structures for the variation, non-informing accessory structures. Should the Z E A have that same ability to do that with, with the construction? Again, this is really clarification, not intending to change our interpretation of the code. The code is clear about certain aspects of this, really short event to make sure it's clear going forward. Code amendment process, three steps, initial village for consideration, that's where we are this evening. You can either deny the amendment outright, or you can refer it to the zoning commission for public hearing and recognition. You can include any instructions to the zoning commission as appropriate. Then the zoning commission has public hearing, looking at recognition, back to the motion board for a final decision. With that, I will, folks, you can be, the agenda package tonight does include a resolution referring this amendment to this zoning commission. And so motion time would be to adopt this resolution. And I'll happy to answer any questions that might happen.
So some of the questions presented are potentially complicated. That is, okay, if there's a school that is existing, not informed users, the school goes out and a church comes in, can they bash it or do they have to start over? If it's a church, schools, those are potentially complicated questions. Yeah, think about those. The most straightforward question, which we have experience is that non-informing and faltering use of the church or school and the church or school goes out and is getting caught a house. The understanding it has of that, if you have applied it, I think, hopefully, it's going to be a church when I place by a house. The understanding is, oh, if a house comes in, your cat is all in rules for saying we've got homes. You can't apply for variance, but it's the single we have in home variance. And the principle that happens here is we're going to certainly make that clear or clearer so that it's not just interpreted, but it's, it's there. And that seems to be like a good idea. So I, you know, I don't have, I don't necessarily have an answer. If you simply sort of affirming potential grandfather uses, because one, not residential use, not residential use. But that, I don't know the answer. But the main question I expect you should hear from me. So zoning commission and what I like to hear is, is residential, it will be treated like residential. With that, is there a motion to approve this reference? This is just the start of the process. So we'll go with somebody who's, they'll have a hearing of recognition of some.
They're going to make recognition from across the board. All the examples you get, or are we gonna?
I have the answer. I, I don't know. They're getting questioned on that. You know, their recognition, their recognition would be we have, you know, we want to discuss a lot of the evidence here and figure it out in a summer house.
So there may be different levels of recommendations and some are going to have to be left in discussion as well.
I hope they'll make recognition of all of it. So the village board can make a decision. All of it's always best when, you know, our residents' rights are involved. So I hope that they'll make recognition of all of them. I don't, I'm not going to prejudge the non-residential to non-residential. I just haven't thought about that and I don't know, we have a lot of experience with it. You do that experience with a non-residential use in a residential area, switching to residential. And then our experience is that it seems right is you're building a house, watering the house. Is there a motion to refer this issue to the zoning, to approve resolution? For for. And second, so roll call please.
Trusty Hall, yes, trusty listener.
Yeah.
Trusty meal.
Yeah.
Trusty, yes.
Trusty Ruben.
Yes, trusty Scott.
Yes.
Motion carries, is it, is it referred to zoning commission for, they go, oh, they're making it too. That's the last item on the agenda. And you don't have a close central space. Thank you. I just want to say one thing, I was not at the best meeting. Sorry, just. Sue. And no doubt, a third or a half, because of the mindless. The only person I can hear every word was trusty meal, every word, but everybody else. You were like, I dated myself, sitting in the rain, needle of mine was first learning how to do a sound picture and every time she turned, the voice went away. That was what I did here. So tonight, we're trying to better strikes and we're on top of the strikes. And if anybody is out there in the ether listening, let us know. Because we want to do better. All right, with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.